If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, we have a lot of minutes to approve. Our first is April nineteenth, two thousand and ten. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Phil, you good?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes from April nineteenth. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Campesano, any changes?
Well, I have a comment.
Okay.
I think the minutes are too long.
Long.
I think some of the discussion on some of the topics seems to ramble. And I think in our previous discussion that once we had peg on demand that the minutes should be shortened.
I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take that up after we accept the minutes. That's the very topic, if it's okay with you?
That's fine, that's why you didn't get a, that's why you didn't get any motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to accept the meeting minutes of April nineteenth, two thousand and ten. Any other, any corrections? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next would be April twenty-sixth. Do you have a motion to approve? By Selectman Campesano, seconded by?
I second that.
Selectman Pierce, any changes? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
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 That'll be four zero one with I'm abstaining. And then lastly, last week's, May third, two thousand and ten. Do you have a motion to accept? By Selectman Devanza, do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Campesano, any corrections? There was one on page, well, Drescher's name was spelled wrong on, hold on. Page eight, third paragraph. That was it. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of May third, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm abstaining four zero one, okay. Now some discussion about the length of the minutes and I believe that we've kind of, we have talked about peg on demand and the fact that we do have the ability, or we will have the ability, for people to actually watch the minutes. They can actually go in and hone in on a specific topic that we discussed based upon the fact that Andrew or whoever would be doing it would be kind of coding it as such. I'm kind of in agreement with Phil on this one, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I don't think that the minutes need to be as voluminous, but.
What are the official minutes?
The official minutes of the paper record.
And I would keep them as they are because many times residents or people will refer to minutes, the official minutes. And if they're just very broad and they really don't capture the essence of the conversation, then that puts them at a disadvantage for whoever's trying to utilize those minutes.
Yes, Phil.
Well, one of the subjects, and I've had many people comment to me that they try to follow the selectmen's minutes and they seem to ramble and they talk about things and they can't follow them. And the set of minutes that we approved, the first set of minutes, there's some specific examples in those minutes. And I don't have my copy of the minutes with mark, but if you want, if somebody has a copy of them, I can find a specific subject matter. And we don't need all the ramblings of each individual selectmen and conversations that are totally irrelevant to the subject matter in the topic. What we need is a general summary, an overview of what the discussion was. If somebody is very opposed to a subject or very for a subject and they want it in the record, there's no problem having that in the record. But have it so that a person that hasn't been at the meeting and reads the minutes and just can't follow it because it's rambling back and forth and they can't follow it. That's what comments have been made to me.
Selectman Pierce.
On many of the subjects we discuss, this board, the members of this board come to the table already with a lot of background information. And so that's where I believe Selectman Devanza's comments are coming from. We already know that each other has a background and we make comments based on that background. And to the audience sitting out there, they're missing some of the points of the conversation. So it does seem like we're rambling as we come to a resolution. I do agree that it would be best if the, if the summary could be made of the speakers. The worst case would be simply that you would take minutes and say, there was a vigorous discussion, then a motion was made. Well, the public needs to know in the official minutes that what were the views being discussed by each of us.
And I agree with both positions, but I think the time when Chairman states, do I have a motion to accept the minutes? If there are issues within the minutes where they're not clear or they seem like they're rambling, at that point, I think that's when someone should speak up and say, this section doesn't make sense. We need to clarify it. My impression is when we vote on the minutes and we say that they're okay, they're okay. If we need to adjust how the minutes are taken, that's fine as well. But I agree with Selectman Pierce that we need to have the views of the board members as they state them. We need to have the various positions. Sometimes when we generalize, as you said, it just, there's nothing to the minutes.
Anyone else like to be heard? The board would like to take any action. We can have these discussions, but.
Well, what I would like to do is find a section that I, I want to give you an example of a section. And I'll read that section publicly, okay? And if the board feels that what's in that set of minutes and that should be in there, then that's fine. But I just want to make it publicly known that I don't think that what's in that conversation that's in there is something that needs to be in the minutes.
Now that.
Yes, David.
Now that we're perhaps more aware of this situation, the minutes for this session next week could be a good.
I found it. April nineteenth. April twelfth. Old business, road plan. Third paragraph. Chairman Gross asked if this is what was presented to us with no changes. Yes, said Selectman Capinsano. This is basically an exact spreadsheet I put together utilizing all the numbers. We've, now just remember, this is a third paragraph into this discussion already. This is basically an Excel spreadsheet I put together utilizing all the numbers we were given and all, and they all match. This was just more of a math check, added Selectman Capinsano. Starting on the fourth page, the one difference there is the encumbered money. There's incumbent money of seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Vice Chairman Devanza questioned which page Selectman Capinsano was on. On page five, said Selectman Capinsano. I apologize, I should have numbered them, it would have been easier. Can you go over that again, asked Chairman Devanza. Sure, said Selectman Capinsano. On page five, it is the same as you saw on page two. But now under twenty-ten appropriations, there was included a figure for encumbered, but there is a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar difference from the encumbered that we received on the road plan. The very last page is the encumbered list we voted on December twenty-first. Sue said that's where you got the seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars? Yes, answered Selectman Capinsano. He then named the projects included in that total. Sue went back over those contracts with Selectman Capinsano. Sue asked, was RH White part of the era or part of the road plan? Selectman Capinsano said, I don't know. Sue said it has to be the road plan because RH White.
I think we got the point.
Oh, I was gonna ask him to repeat, I missed the. Yep.
And it goes on, and we have four, five, six, seven paragraphs on this topic.
All right, I think.
Okay.
Here's how I would, if I may. Let's just sleep on this one. We don't live in a vacuum and I would urge the other selectmen to, one, take a look at other minutes from other websites, from other towns to see what is out there. We also, we do have statutory obligations with regard to minutes. You can't have too much, you shouldn't have too much, you shouldn't have too little. It's just right, it's like, you know, the Little Red Riding Hood, I guess, or something. So if we can sleep on it and then come to grips. One thing to factor into it is that there is a tremendous amount of time that goes into minute taking and minute transcription. So we can, we can provide minutes such as these, but there's a cost to that as well. Because it takes a lot of time to, you know, to do that. And I don't, I don't, we can certainly ask Catherine how long it takes her to type up these minutes every week, but I would say it's probably a day for you to do all this.
Two plus.
Two plus days, okay.
I understand my days are very interrupted.
Right, and I understand, right. And I think that we have to also factor that in. So we'll put it on our agenda, you know, for next week, but there is a cost to all this too. So let's not, you know, forget that. And it's hours, and it's hours that we could be providing help to citizens and.
I hope everybody who comes in is part of mine. I lose track.
Just a comment here, I'm not sure if next week will give me any more information than I need today. That's just my comment. I hate it when we always push something off another week, another week.
Well, unless you, so you have looked at other towns, if you have.
No, I'm prepared, I have not looked at other towns, but I'm, but I am quite prepared to go forward to what I think would be probably the best way with the minutes.
Would you like to articulate that?
Okay, I will articulate that. I believe we can condense some more. And I do believe now that peg is on that it is a better place to go. And I think you get a better picture than reading the minutes.
All right. Thank you. We'll make sure that's reflected in the minutes, Steve. And.
I've been doing this this last week, I've been to five different towns' minutes for the selectmen. And I haven't found one over three pages long yet.
Yes, so.
Phil's, Phil has a good.
Well, if it's okay, we'll sleep on this until Monday and get it. I personally, I mean, I have my own opinions, but I also think that we should.
Well, let's hear them.
I'm in the same, I agree with Phil from the outset, I think that they are too long. I think with peg on demand, I think if people want to hear verbatim, then that is a perfect place for them to go. And I think we have to keep up with technology. And the other primary motivator for me is that there is a cost to doing this. There's a cost to have Catherine's time, of Sue's time, to review the minutes. And I believe that our obligation is to put down a little bit more meat in terms of what we discussed on our agenda. Obviously, the motions and any strong opinions either way. But other than that, the verbatim stuff I don't think is necessary.
A suggestion, next Monday when we come, be prepared, have read the minutes, make suggestions within the minutes as to where you want them condensed. And I think over a period of time, we'll shape the minutes into what we want them to be versus trying to say, they should look like this, or they should look like this. Simply read them, come with your suggestions, and we'll make those suggestions. And I think Catherine, over a long period of time, will learn what our style is, what we want to see in minutes, and they'll evolve to what we want.
Okay. All right, is everybody have content there? All right, let's go on, a public comment. We had this delay, just so that we could wait till six fifteen. I know we have Diane McCarthy in the audience, would you like to address the board?
I would.
If you wouldn't mind, Diane, just, you can come on up front and just state your name and your address for the record, for the minutes, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Diane McCarthy, one sixteen Mountain Base Road. And I'm just here to ask you guys, I know you're discussing issues over at Glen Lake. And as you proceed with the changes you're looking to make, or maybe not make, just asking that you're cognizant of the possible effects it's gonna have on our other swimming area in town, which is the lake at Mountain Base. It's a small beach, it is clearly marked for residents only. But I'm pretty confident in telling you that is not enforced. My concern is if you start to charge at Glen Lake, individuals who are looking for a free swimming area will just travel to the lake at Mountain Base or find another lake. But I am concerned where it is local, they will use that as an alternative. I don't feel that the lake can sustain the additional use. I don't think the residential area can sustain the additional use. As it is, we have issues with the use that we have. So I would like you to be sensitive to that. Maybe, like I said, if you can at least just enforce the residency, that might help us some.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Diane? All right, we will be taking this up under E, which will probably be around six forty-five, I'm thinking.
You won't think I'm rude if I leave, will you?
What?
You won't think I'm rude if I leave, will you?
Oh, you're welcome to stay.
We've never left any of your meetings.
I'll go watch you on TV.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Good night. All right, any other public comment? Would Greg from the union leader like to comment? All right. I do have some announcements, if I, if you would indulge me, we have many. First, I have several.
Well, here's a question for you. Shall I put the announcements in the minutes or just say, see the website? Because I usually put them there, know people are gonna read them and that might be the only way they would've got the information, although sometimes it's not timely by the time the minutes come out.
I don't.
They do take up space.
Yes.
Suggestion, if we could somehow just attach these to the minutes and scan them in or however, or put them as part of the PDF at the very end. And in that section, just say, see, end of minutes or, and then, because most of these are photocopied for us. They're either copies of letters or copies of cards.
All right, I'm going to read these off, there are several of them. May fourth, two thousand and ten, the Goffstown Police Department has received several phone calls today in reference to a telephone solicitation company requesting donations to combat drunk driving behavior. While the Goffstown Police Department takes a firm stance against DWI, we are not in collaboration. The telephone solicitors are from Stop Drunk Driving Now. Their tactics are to allude that they are working in concert with local law enforcement in hopes of securing your donation. While we cannot advise residents not to donate, we would like to advise that this organization is a for-profit organization and not part of any charitable trust. And if you have any questions, call the Goffstown Police Department at four nine seven four eight five eight. May fourth was another press release. The Goffstown Police Department wishes to remind residents that dogs four months and older require a license to be purchased through the town clerk's office. These licenses must be renewed annually by May first of each year. The cost of the dog licenses are as follows. Altered dog, six dollars and fifty cents, an unaltered dog, nine dollars, and a senior citizen owner is two dollars. Okay, next is, these are some road construction issues. And for those in the audience, as we had alluded to earlier on in the year, there will be quite a bit of road construction this spring, summer, and fall, so please be patient. The Goffstown Police Department in Public Works announces the extended closure of South Mass Street for utility work related to the South Mass Road Drainage Improvements Project. The closure started Monday, May third, two thousand and ten, was expected to last until Friday, May seventh. However, due to the recent windstorm, there have been unanticipated delays which require an extension of the road closure until Tuesday, May eleventh, which will be tomorrow. South Mass will be closed during the weekdays from nine AM to two PM and reopened each night. Local traffic will be allowed access within the project area on South Mass Street. Commercial vehicles and commuter vehicles needing access for through traffic should use Eastern Union Street detour. If any questions, refer to the Goffstown website, which is www.goffstown.com. Or you can contact Alex Kanan at the Department of Public Works at four nine seven three six one seven, extension twenty-seven. Next road closure or road construction alert is on Monday, May tenth, which is today. The Goffstown Village Water Precinct will be starting a water main replacement project on Elm Street beginning at one fifty Elm Street to two oh seven Elm Street. Work will then continue up Page Hill Road from Elm Street approximately six hundred feet. This project is expected to last about three weeks and it will end around June first. Expect some delays of traffic as they will be down to one lane during the day. And again, you can get more information on the town's website or you can contact Lee Minnick at the Goffstown Village Water Precinct at four nine seven three six two one. And last but not least, this Saturday will be the first annual Goffstown Business Expo. It is a fundraising event for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth Anniversary Committee for Goffstown. And that will start at ten AM on Saturday, it'll last until four PM. Just wanted to welcome all of our businesses and our citizens. There will be a lot of free giveaways and come connect with a lot of our local business owners who are anxiously waiting to see you.
Their admission?
What?
Admission.
There is a two dollar admission fee. Any other questions? All right, any other announcements? None, okay, we'll start then with our town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Weekly meeting schedule, the sewer commission is meeting tomorrow and that's now at four thirty, not six thirty. I know Chairman Pierce is not gonna be available.
I'm not gonna be available, I'm in a class. And, but if it's fine with the board, I will examine the minutes from that meeting and then report back.
Or watch it on TV.
Or watch it on TV.
Well, Andrew, you're up.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I was, if you could bring your laptop with you while you're in the class, you could have one.
Next.
Thursday, seven o'clock is a planning board. Consensus folder tonight includes AP warrants, employee status reports, basically two resignations, event permit for the Garden Club Spring Plant Sale, May twenty-second, and a reissuance of event permit for the St. Anthony's School Car Wash at one ninety-seven Mass Road on May twenty-second. It was formally approved for May eighth, not fifteenth. And notice of lien for map eleven lot nineteen A.
Motion to approve the consensus folder.
Do you have a motion to accept the consensus folder, do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor of accepting the consensus folder, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you, the assessor has some recommendations for you tonight. Two thousand nine tax abatements, approval recommended. I'm getting some feedback from my voice. May fourth, lot ninety-one. Two thousand nine tax abatement denial recommended, May twenty-sixth, lot twenty-four. Report of timber cut, map nine, lots twenty-five dash one through twenty-five dash seven, and map three, lot three. And the current use, land use change tax lien release for map one, lot fifty, and map five, lot thirty-two dash five.
Is there a motion to accept the assessor's recommendation?
So move.
Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Seconded by Selectman Pierce, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Two reappointments tonight, Darren Pearson seeks reappointment to the Building Port of Appeals and Richard Hoff seeks reappointment to the ADA Committee.
Need a motion to reappoint?
So move.
Do I have a second? I'll second it, all those in favor of these reappointments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. Regarding Glen Lake.
Let's skip that one.
You wanna skip that one?
Yep, we'll put that to the end.
Okay. Paving bid award recommendation, last week Megan and I opened three bids of paving, all of which were received in a timely manner. Megan's prepared the enclosed chart listing each item's unit cost and the extended price. The bottom line bids were as follows, Continental Paving, one million, seven thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty cents. Brock Industries, one million, fifty-one thousand, seven fifty-four. And Pike Industries, one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. DPW recommends a bid award to the low bidder, Continental Paving. This year's unit price is sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Last year's bid was sixty-four fifty. And Carl had estimated sixty-eight per ton in the road plan that he had submitted to.
Okay, a motion is needed to accept the paving bid award of Continental Paving.
Motion to award the paving bid to Continental.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you, since we're on bids, the school sent over late Friday the results. They went out, we went out to bid with them for heating oil and propane. And the results are as follows, and these are only good till tomorrow.
Wow.
They give you a very small window with these markets.
Well, they do, because a new number comes out Wednesday, eleven o'clock Wednesday.
So the, there was only one bidder for propane, and that was Eastern Propane, who currently has a bid. And the price, this, well, it just expires, well, it's expiring the end of this month, was one twenty-nine. And for the following heating season is one point seven three five. There were two bids for heating oil. And they were Fuller, who is a current vendor, and his bid was two point three eight five. And Burke, whose bid was two point three nine five.
I'm just, I'm surprised that there was only this few bidders. Seems strange.
Well, well, one, we called other companies that have bid in the past and one says it's too large, too risky to bid because of the volume between the school and the town and the other towns that are, because we've got so many, you'd think that price would, I mean, volume would give you a better price, but it's too risky for some of the smaller companies.
Right.
I think it begs the question then, should we think about doing it ourselves?
Well, we called some companies to see what the price would be today if it was just the town and the best price we could do is two point four nine.
Okay, so it's still advantageous.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions from the board? I would need a motion to accept these recommendations.
Which would be the low bidder.
The low bidder for propane and heating oil.
So move to low bidders, Eastern for propane and Fuller for heating oil.
All right, any questions? I'm sorry, do I have a second first? I'll second it. Any questions? I'm not seeing or hearing anything. All those in favor of accepting those bid recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. The proposed amendment on LGC reserves, this is just FYI. A brief public hearing was held last Tuesday by the Senate Commerce Committee on an amendment to Senate Bill, it was either forty-five or four fifty, I've seen it written both ways, to restrict LGC reserves to five percent. Representative Heikel was the only person allowed to testify against the amendment on Tuesday. The public hearing was continued to Thursday. On Thursday, many people testified against the amendment. However, four of the six Commerce Committee members had sponsored the amendment and it was expected they would vote to support that. I haven't heard the results of that vote. A similar bill in the House was attempted to cap reserves at ten percent and this was defeated by the House Finance Committee last week. Representative Kirk responded to our emails as follows. I plan to offer an amendment to put pooled trusts under the supervision of the Insurance Department, a regulator who will allow the appropriate level of reserves to ensure all claims in that. So that's the direction Representative Kirk was gonna go.
Is it, I did read the minutes. Is it, and I know we have asked our representatives to obviously vote in favor of, I should say.
Against the amendment.
Yeah. Should we, I believe what Representative Kirk is doing is the right way to approach it. I mean, that is the regulatory agency who has the most expertise in this. They regulate private medical carriers, make sure that their reserves are adequate. I can't see why it wouldn't be done. Is there any way that we could maybe convey that to our other reps to say, please support, you know? I can't, I don't think we can assume that Neil Kirk is letting the other Goffstown reps know. So if we could maybe send them an email saying, we've been in touch with, thank you, Representative Heikel for speaking on the town's behalf, one, and we do agree with Representative Kirk and that this should be under the auspices of the Insurance Department to regulate it and we fully support his position. Is that, does the board wish to go in that direction, just to make sure that we're covering bases? Yes.
No, I agree with that and I don't know at this point if putting any reference to the fact that the amendment is trying to put it under the Secretary of State or just leave that completely out. Because nobody seems to really figure out why the Secretary of State would want to have it. I mean, it's got nothing to do with.
Right, and it's all based upon, you know, actuary and claims experience and it's not something that just anybody, you know, you have to have a certain skill set.
Absolutely.
To properly manage these reserves. And I don't, I don't think it should be a political tool at this point, but I, does the board wish to? I'll make a motion that the board authorize the town administrator to send an email or notification to our state reps supporting, one, thanking Representative Heikel for his testimony and also supporting Neil Kirk's recommendations.
Could we also include that to Senator?
Yes, Senator DeLisandra. Is there any other discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Can she send a copy of the LGC, it's not a problem.
Yeah. Five zero.
Okay, now that the final design and roundabout change order have been approved, we had talked about moving forward to a public information meeting on the roundabout. The Board of Selectmen would probably present, I think that our discussion at one time went that you'd present the pros and cons and all the options you looked at, and then move forward and have Carl discuss the construction plan and timeline and map that out for the residents. And May twenty fourth is open at the high school, if you wanted to hold it there.
How's the board wish to proceed? Is that date acceptable?
What time, on twenty fourth?
Seven thirty.
It'll be seven thirty.
We would initially meet here and then reconvene at the high school.
Yes, because we have a seven o'clock public hearing on those right-of-way yield signs in Lynchville Park.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that you checked and it's available.
Yes.
Is that date, Nick, is that okay with you?
That's a regular Monday.
It's a regular Monday.
Regular Monday, yes.
Okay, we're all set then. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and we will get the word out.
And Carl is available that day?
Yes, he is. I checked. Checked with staff first and then checked with the high school, and the high school go back to us today saying it was available.
Okay.
Okay, back to Glen Lake. You've received emails from two residents that are in your packet tonight. Rose Mary and Colas Adams. Would you like me to read those into the record?
Um, sure.
Let's see, that was for E. This one's from Rose Mary. Good morning, Sue. I wasn't planning on weighing in on the Glen Lake issue, but decided after reading today's Union Leader article that I needed to voice my opinion. Please feel free to share my thoughts with the Board of Selectmen. By becoming a town-only lake, the state won't stock the lake with fish. That means, one, that there won't be any fish for fishermen to attempt to catch. Two, without the fish to keep the lake clean, it will eventually become stagnant and no longer viable resource to the town. And three, fly in the face of what the Economic Development Council is trying to accomplish in bringing outsiders to town to spend their hard-earned dollars. We'd be saying, welcome to Goffstown, but don't try to use our lake because you don't live here. What would be next, the mountain, rails, trails, hiking areas? In other words, I think it's a bad idea. Has anyone done any kind of survey amongst Goffstown residents to see how many of them want to use the lake and can't, or is it just a few vocal individuals who have gotten him to take up their cause? Granted, that is a part of a selectman's duty, but I feel a bit more research into the need should be done before any decision is made. Rose Mary Garrettson. And then I had sent an email to Colas because he was instrumental in the revitalization of the area back in two thousand and one. And he responded, thanks for keeping me in the loop on this because that area does mean a lot to me. To address your issues. Let's see, one and two. The original plan was to restrict it to Goffstown residents only or to those non-residents who pay an annual user fee. This is reasonable because residents already contribute to the upkeep through taxes, so non-residents should pay their fair share for the same upkeep. This was rejected by the Board of Selectmen in the original plan. Three, expand the parking area. Absolutely not. If you recall, we went to great lengths to strike a balance between allowing access to the general public while not overtaking the lake environment as well as keeping the shorefront residents supportive of the pain. No, don't go there. Four, lighting would help with the off-hours misuse, and that was suggested as part of the original development plan but was rejected due to the cost to taxpayers. Five, I think that this will create an enforcement problem. Restricting it to residents only or non-residents who pay an annual use fee should accomplish the same thing with the exception that there'd be no first-come, first-served option to non-residents. Oh, well, too bad. Six, enforcement is an issue with any ordinance. This is a high-profile area and should warrant a high priority for enforcement. It already has one of the highest penalty fines in town. Why do we not enforce that and aggressively pursue collection? Fish and game. We address this issue also because only the auto parking area would be restricted to residents only. The boat trail lot would be open to the public to satisfy fish and game, and they agreed with this approach. Ensured these issues were already contemplated in the original design for the most part. I would love to be included in any future discussions about the area. Thanks for keeping him near mind, Colas.
All right, and in our packets, as everyone knows, but for the, for the public, we did get background materials. This is going back nine years ago almost with regard to the proposed ordinances for the waterfront. We have many of the selectmen's minutes from July twentieth, August twentieth, two thousand and one, December seventeenth, two thousand and one, and January seventh, two thousand and two. So we did, the selectmen, this board, did get the opportunity to look at the history of the site, and we are, we're at where we are at. Anybody want to comment? Steve?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion in how utilized the Glen Lake beachfront. One, I'd like to see it reserved for town residents and accompanying guests. Two, the eighteen parking spaces along the beachside be reserved for residents displaying salvage permit stickers from the town, town transfer station. And the third part, would, I would like to see the remaining seven parking spaces that are, that are across the street that accommodate trailer parking should be utilized in this manner. That four be reserved for residents displaying the sticker, and three for general public use.
Do I have a second? I'll second it for discussion. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I would like to speak to it. Okay, I think in town, we're fortunate to have Glen Lake. We're fortunate to have some of the, two lakes, a mountain, and trails. But the reality of Glen Lake is that we have eighteen parking spaces with a population of a community of eighteen thousand. Next, I'd also like to address as far as people are concerned about the fish, et cetera, regarding would be stocking or not. And I'd like to list, read off a small list, a very small list of water bodies that are private beaches by towns, and those lakes are stocked by fish and game. And that would be Squam Lake and Sandwich. Guilford Beach is private, and Lake One of Pisaki, Holden is a little Squam Lake. And northward, there's Lucas Pond. In Madison, there's Silver Lake, Stratford Bow Lake. There's, there's a beach in Meredith on Lake One of Pisaki. And in New Durham, there's Mary Meeting Lake. All these lakes are private bodies, private beaches by the town, and those lakes are stocked. Next, I'd like to add that the Glen Lake boat ramp is owned by the town and not by the state. And regards to Marine Patrol, if the body of water is, is in excess of ten acres in size, the Marine Patrol will monitor it. And it does not matter if the beach is private or public, okay? This has been, this has been researched. And so they will, and they will continue to do so, be it the beach changes from, from, from a town beach to, from public to town. The next thing I'd like to add, and I don't know the true number of the amount of boats that are registered in town, but I was able to get a copy of the, an agent's fee. In other words, if you decide to register your boat through the town, there's a, there's a fee that the town charges you. Some people go to the marinas, some people come here. In two thousand and nine alone, five hundred and six boats were registered in the town of Goffstown. And that means there's much more than that because there are other people who'd go to the local marinas and have that. So with that being said, we have a large demand for the lake and very small capacity. Eighteen parking spaces for those who would like to enjoy the waterfront, seven parking spaces for those who would like to bring their boat. We have eighteen thousand people in the community and over five hundred boats registered in the community. And as was just spoken early in public session, we also have another body of water that is also residents only, so I can add that to my list of, from the New Durham, Meredith, Stratford, Madison, et cetera. I think in times, as we look back at the lake, I think it's been addressed in several ways where we've always looked at that balance of utilizing as a resource for the community and people beyond the community. I think passports made a decision in regards to when you see the amount of parking, the rails, the no parking, that we said the limit of the size was to eighteen. And so with that, I think it would be us, it would be this body's intention that we should go for the best usage of that lake for the town people and those people who pay taxes for the support of that beach.
Any other comments?
Question?
Lost it, yeah.
So according to any of those other lakes that you listed that are, have private town beaches
Correct.
but are still stocked, do they have another public boat launch on the lake?
That I don't have the answer to, but I will also say that Glen Lake is not even on the list for stocking of fish also if you go to the site.
But they do.
And I will also tell you that I live on the Maskey Lake, and there are fish there, and we don't have stocking.
Because when I talked to fish and game, they said if there was other access points where the public could launch their boat, then they would continue to stock.
I don't know the answer to this one.
And we would still have access.
What do you mean? I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
Would still have access, and there would still be sites reserved for, for people in town, for trailers, and those for out of town. So there would still be access also.
What about, behind the Parks and Rec building, there is a ramp. Is that open to the public?
That's not owned by the town.
Oh, okay. Who owns it?
Public service.
Okay.
But once again, the boat ramp would still have, people would still have access, not just to the town, but outside of town access to the boat ramp, and there would be parking.
Are there any other access points that are?
The former syrup plant.
Pump station.
The pump station?
Yeah, I put in my kayak at the pump station.
I have to.
Okay. So that's another access point then?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other? Yes, Phil?
Steve, what, what is it that you anticipate that this motion of yours is going to accomplish?
I think there's several things it's going to accomplish. I think one, most, mostly is that when you have a population of eighteen thousand and you have eighteen parking spaces, I think that you have to look at your community and say, how are we best serving the, with, 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 with the natural of the, of the beach that we have there? And I don't think we can serve them. In fact, I don't think we can serve them just with eighteen parking spaces, but expansion is not on the list for today, okay? And I'm not saying for today or future, I'm just saying the reality is we have eighteen parking spaces. When I've, and I've gone around, and as I meet people just out of the clear blue, I will ask them their opinion regarding Glen Lake. And they're, you know, and most, and all of them will say, I can never get there, I, there's never any access, there's no parking, and that is, that is the main point of this.
Yes, Nick?
I just want to follow up on, on that because I, I heard, and, and I'll start by saying that I am fully supportive of trying to do something to alleviate the issues that we have at Glen Lake. Because I think it has become overused, it's not respected, it's, parking is an issue. But I'm trying to put my hands around how any of the suggested solutions will affect that. Back in two thousand, the ordinance, or the exact year, when the ordinance went into effect, it was passed in an attempt to minimize trash that was left behind. It was passed in an attempt to minimize illegal drinking at the boat, the, the, the beach area. It was passed to alleviate people staying there after hours. But many of those same problems still exist. Restricting parking to town-only residents is basically saying that Goffstown residents are above all of that behavior, and no Goffstown resident is going to go there and leave trash, and no Goffstown resident is going to go there and drink after hours or stay when it's dark. I think all of those are problems that cumulatively make Glen Lake a less desirable place to go. It's a beautiful spot, but when you add all those problems together, it diminishes its appeal. The one thing that I am trying to put my hands around is enforcement. Where is the enforcement piece? Who is going to enforce a resident-only parking? Have we heard from the police chief? Does he have the manpower to be able to drive back and forth? Regardless of what the solution is, there needs to be an enforcement piece. And without addressing that enforcement piece, nothing that we do is going to dramatically change what we find at Glen Lake.
Following up to that, I guess the reason for my question of what is this going to achieve is because I also heard, and I also saw pictures of Jack Daniels cigarette butts, trash on Glen Lake. In having discussions with Chief Sullivan about this, I also asked the question about a other lake. That's residents only. Do we have trash there? Do we have drinking there? The response was, yes. Cases of beer bottles, amount of trash that's there, and that's residents only. And that one actually is a little bit better self-regulated because it's a little out of the way, and the residents that are there know each other. They, so when there are people that are non-residents, it polices itself a little, on a little different way than, than Glen Lake was, but it comes down to the thing is it's not only Goffstown residents. Or by making it non-residents, we're not going to eliminate the trash or the drinking. The enforcement issue is, is, is the thing. And the chief can do enforcement. That enforcement has, going to be taken away from some other duties to do the enforcement. And his belief is that when the season starts, that's the time to do the enforcement, have the patrols down at the beach, and that message will go out. One of the other issues that I don't see how the motion that's on the table addresses is the vehicles that come by, sometimes full-size vans, that drop off quite a few people at the beach front at Glen Lake. And they go and they park up on Upton Lane. Then the police department gets the phone call from the residents and saying, they're parking on my front lawn up here, and they're down at Glen Lake. And the response is, well, if they're on your property, you can have it towed. And I don't want to call them up and have them towed and have them come back and, and trash my house or my vehicles. This is a similar type issue that we had with the parking at the high school type of thing. You make the, the restriction, no parking, so far, they drop people off, and one person goes and parks, and they walk back. I mean, if it takes them twenty minutes to walk back, it doesn't matter. Everybody else is there, they're there for the day. You have other areas that they're going to park. The chiefs, another concern that the chief has is that by making this, it's the enforcement. If you say that you're going to use a transfer station sticker, okay? The majority of residents in town do not have stickers on every vehicle. There are many residents in Goffstown who do not even go to the transfer station. There are many that have more than one vehicle in a car, in a family. The pickup truck might be the one that goes to the transfer station. The Kia or the Cadillac or the other vehicle that the wife drives may not be the one that goes. The truck could be in the shop on a Saturday, over the weekend, they want to use it on a Sunday, the vehicle gets down, and, and I've asked the chief, I said, okay, so you go there and you give a ticket to somebody because they did not have a transfer station sticker on their vehicle. And they go in front of judge in court. I'm, Your Honor, I'm a Goffstown resident. My vehicle with the transfer station sticker was in the shop over the weekend. It was very, very hot. My kids wanted to use Glen Lake, and we went down there and I got a ticket. Your Honor, I'm a resident of Goffstown. Case is going to be dismissed.
Okay.
In short, what the chief said, that if we did some enforcement in the beginning of the season, he's pretty sure that this, majority of these issues could be, be addressed. And the fact that the light, the, the issues are not really at nighttime, so he did not feel that lighting at nighttime that was mentioned earlier is really an issue.
David?
I, I want to pick up on your is, your the trash, transfer point stickers on windshields. In my particular case, my daughter and her family come to visit us here in Goffstown, and we use their car because it's all set up with the, with the child's seats and go to the Glen Lake waterfront. And we enjoy ourselves. And, uh, we enjoy ourselves and we probably five times a summer. So, uh, we don't rearrange all the children's seat into my car, just because it has that sticker. We use my daughter's car. So I, I imagine it could be other people with guests, uh, coming into the town in the same situation. So, uh, stickers aren't the only solution. My recommendation, um, other than what's on the table is better access to the trash containers there, perhaps, and more trash containers. Better pickup of those, uh, trash barrels, uh, even every day or every other day. That we do what was suggested when this, uh, subject was first brought to the board. Uh, do a survey of the, uh, parking situations over several weeks in the summer. And I'm available to help on that. And I do endorse putting some sort of lighting at the boat ramp or beach area. Those are steps that I would take in lieu of rushing into non-resident only restrictions. Thank you.
Yep.
I, I just want to remind the board, we also had a proposal for a, um, paid parking.
Kiosks.
Kiosk. And I think we should explore that because that may provide some funding to have a manned presence, a seasonal type person who may rotate between the different beach areas to enforce whether there are people there with alcohol, to enforce the trash, to enforce any other. Again, it may give us that enforcement piece. And you could waive, uh, resident fees, parking fees if they had a, a sticker. So I don't want to lose track of that proposal, one of the original proposals that came before the board.
All right, um, I just want to get my chance to weigh in on it. I, I'm in somewhat supportive of what you're doing Steve, but I, only because, but not to, to that extreme. I, I, I do think that there should, there should be reserved spaces for Goffstown residents, period. Um, and I think that some Goff, many Goffstown residents are shut out. Other people from other communities come here, whether it be the boats or whether it be these parking spaces, they are shut out. And that should not be, and I, I would think that there would be a happy medium where, um, perhaps half of the, the spots were for Goffstown residents only. The other half were open to the public, step up the enforcement end, um, ex, do, do our studies, et cetera. But in the short period of time, Goffstown residents who pay the taxes here should at least know that they've got at least four spots for their boats and at least ten spots, eight to ten spots for, for vehicles. And we're still open to the public for boats and for, and for the beach. We still study it, we still may put in a kiosk, we still may have somebody man the beach. But in, but in the interim, in the short term, we're guaranteeing that Goffstown residents have access to that beach. And right now, I don't get the sense from the people that I talk to that a lot of folks do have access to it or guaranteed some sort of access. I just don't, I just don't sense that, and I could be wrong, but, um, it seems as if a lot of our own residents who are paying for it are shut out from it. Yes Nick?
Just, well, just one thing that strikes me, I mean, we talk about the enforcement piece and stepped up enforcement in the spring. This isn't a problem that just popped up this year. It has been ongoing since, so why haven't we done that in, in the spring? Every spring to, to send a message, I mean, I, I think it's something that when it's in the limelight, you think about it, when it's not, the enforcement drops off.
And the other thing, and again, I'll, when we pull someone over for a moving violation, that money goes to the state. When we find someone for illegal parking or illegal dumping, whatever, that stays in our town. Okay. Yes. So if anything, if we're gonna, if we're gonna sit on Big Jane's Lane and, and watch for people who are going over the speed limit, which I'm all for, we, we also could patrol that other area and whatever, and then whatever tickets are there, um, you know, that money stays within the town. And I also think there's, there's, there are some easy ways around what you were saying before. I mean, when you get your ticket and, and you're using your own car, you, you just send in a copy of your driver's license or your registration and you're done. I mean, there's no need to go to court, um, if there was some sort of, you know, if you're using a different vehicle, I don't think that's a big, I don't think that's a big problem. I don't think more, everybody wants to be kind of a, you know, take such drastic measures. But I do think that kind of being fair, um, I think we alleviate these problems with fishing games that's still open to the public, but yet we still reserve some spots for, um, at least, at least half the spots for our own residents who are paying the freight for it. So that's the only thing, I would probably modify your, your motion in that regard. Yep.
Okay, um. When I look at this and we talked about enforcement, I think enforcement, it, it goes no matter what happens at the lake. Without enforcement, there's no sense having, having a park there. Second piece, we need, this is, this, this is a step that needs to be taken. This, this has been looked at, talked about for decades. This has gone on for decades. And we're now coming into another summer and I think it's time that we do act because part of this board is to look at the best interest of the, of, for the residents of this community. And when we have a natural resource such as that and we're fortunate to have it, but yet we cannot utilize it, I think we're doing the people, the town an injustice and in service that we don't not make it available for them. So going back to your piece where you said, what is the main thing for me? It's access. As far as, you know, yes, does it, does it need to be cleaned up? I agree with you totally. But once we have access to it, the second part will be the enforcement of going through and making sure it is done. Are all things perfect? No, the reality is not that. But what is the best for the greater good of the community would be giving, making that town a beach for residents only.
Question.
Yes.
Has this been discussed with economic development? Who's trying to use this as one of the resources to promote economic development?
I don't know what you, how much economic development will come from, or what you think would come from there. But I still place access for my community there over someone going down the road and picking up certain chips or goods. I'm not sure what dollar figure you would think economic development would come from those who do utilize it. But I would also expect that those people who use it within the community would also bring on economic development because they are, whatever usage that you might think come from, from someone else, the same people in town would be utilizing those same goods.
We haven't had any recommendation from economic development or a suggestion or a comment.
The chief. I wouldn't wait on it.
I mean, I think that would be the, uh, the prudent thing to do. And I think especially, uh, my understanding from what I've heard and, uh, from the reports here to this board about economic development, that they're trying to promote the resources for economic development in this type of community. Uh, and I think that, uh, I think that, that we should have that discussion, they should have that discussion and see if they want to weigh in on it.
If I, if I may, um, let, let's try to, if we, sometimes we, if we go through like the pros and the cons of things on our own, um, I, I think we've heard, we, what are some of the knowns? We know that the current condition of the Glen Lake beachfront is unacceptable. Is that fair to say? It's unacceptable in terms of the, the upkeep of it, the cleanliness, the enforcement, that, that has to change, correct? That's why we're here.
I disagree.
Because somebody came in and citizens have expressed concerns that it is not, uh, as clean as it should be. There are, there's some behavior that's unacceptable there and therefore there needs greater enforcement. So is that, let me just try to, you're, you're disagreeing.
I disagree.
Okay.
Some of that could be our own problem. There's, there were a, a family using the beach today. Trash receptacles are locked. So where are they going to put their trash? And there were already trash bags accumulated by the one receptacle.
Right, but then it begs the question, as Sue has mentioned, we have this.
I go, I, I go back to what I was, I mentioned before. I would like to see more trash receptacles better placed with, to where the beach is and not just convenient because it's at the curbside, uh, where a trash truck could pick it up easy. And I would like to s- and see better, uh, more, uh, more pickups during the week to keep the containers empty.
Okay, I, I think by, I mean, if I could to try to expel like this, as a straw poll here, does this board, the, the, the members of this board want additional input from police, economic development or any other stakeholder that you may think needs input or no? And I think I know who you stand because you already made your motion, but.
Can I make, are we, are you making a comment or just taking a straw?
I'm taking a straw poll to see if, um, if, if this board wants to, um, you know, get all this input before making a decision. And you stand?
I, I stand that, I think we've talked about this enough and sometimes we just have to act. Um, regarding if E, if EDC was to say, geez, I think there's going to be some economic development. I, I don't think anyone could put a quantitative number to it, okay? And it doesn't rise into my formula as to access is the primary piece of this, access. And so if someone was to say quantitative that it's going to turn into so many bottles of cokes and chips, et cetera, it doesn't come into the formula, so I don't, I, I don't see weighing in with EDC would be there. As far as the police chief, as far as be we open to, if we keep it at the town beach or, beach or not, the question is enforcement, that won't change access, it'll just be enforcement of what rules and regulations that have been put there. And that doesn't need to be waited for, waited on and wa- waited for, uh, information on. I think we have enough information to debate this, work on, look on it and act on it.
Nick, where do you stand? Do you want more information?
I, I don't need any more information from EDC. Um, I, I don't see.
Police chief, uh, other citizens, a public works.
We're getting trash, we're getting trash.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chip in on that one, it's my turn.
Yep.
I, I agree with Selectman Fournier, I think we need to, we're gonna have to find out what the impact is, but I think we still need to make a decision and, um, I'm going to come back to the enforcement piece, whether we have to say that there is a concerted effort to have a patrol there during the, the warm months, every hour or, or whatever. I agree, we need more trash, trash receptacles located within the beach area. You know, those are things we can do right now. Do I want to know the director's opinion of that? Yes, and I know what he's going to say already, it's going to require more work. It's going to require someone going down there more than they are now. But I don't see anything changing regardless of how we limit that beach without enforcement, without the ability to throw trash in receptacles, um, that are located within a convenient reach.
I'm just going to go around the horn. I'm gonna go, I'll go me then you.
Yes, sir, I would like to hear, uh, input from the, uh.
Oh, I was gonna go first. This way, no, this way it wasn't, it gives the perception that I'm getting the last shot at the apple. All right? I think the issue for me is access. And, um, again, I would alter Selectman Fournier's motion in the sense that I want to guarantee to the Goffstown taxpayer who is forking over the money for this, that, um, they're going to have a degree of access to this facility along with all of the things that have been talked about. And that's all I want to try to guarantee. So if, if half of the spots or more are allocated for Goffstown residents, the other half is open to the general public, I see that as a happy medium and we can tackle everything else, um, as we go along. But at least it's an access issue and Goffstown residents are not being shut out. And, um, equally, I'm not shutting out anybody from any other town or community. But with eighteen thousand people and only eighteen parking spaces, at least half of them should be for our own community. And so I, I don't know, maybe I'm trying to be the great compromiser here, but I just think that that's, the access to me is the issue and that's the predominant, uh, thing in my mind. Yes, sir?
I'd like to hear input from the park department, police department and DPW.
Okay.
I'd like to hear some input, I would think that we should have the discussion with the police chief. And I think that economic development should weigh in on this because if economic development is, is using this as one of the keystones on their plan and we're gonna make this, make a change like this, I think they should be aware of it before we make the change and they should be able to at least weigh in on it. And I guess my main question or the main concern that I have is we're gonna do all of this, we're gonna do this, and in the end, what are we going to change? What are we going to accomplish by this? I said, you know, you, you made the point of making a list of things to do, okay? Some of the things that I look on this list, okay? When I look at the final outcome of making these changes, okay? We're claiming that we're going to guarantee access to Goffstown residents, okay? Well, we're making the argument right here that we have eighteen parking spaces and we have all these Goffstown residents, but now we're talking about, well, gee, all you Goffstown residents, we're going to guarantee you three parking spaces. What have we gained? In the total outcome of all of this and this major change that we're making now and all the concerted effort and resources that we have to put in for enforcement, are we making the beach any cleaner? Are we eliminated the drinking? Are we giving the, and we have a resident here who I thought put it very, very clearly, Rosemary Garrettson. Is, what is the message that we're sending to people who are non-residents? Come into Goffstown, we want you to come into Goffstown, we want you to come here, we want you to come into this town. And this is the way, th- this is the perception that they're going to get from Goff. So we're going to make all these changes, we're going to give all these perceptions and in the total end, when you come down to the bottom line, what have we done? We've guaranteed Goffstown residents three parking spaces and we really ticked off everybody that's outside of town that we want them to come in and economic development wants them to spend money in here.
You said, I, I don't, I don't mean to parse words, but it's more than three parking spaces.
Well, how many sp- three spaces, five spaces you want to reserve for Goffstown residents? What's the difference? I, I don't see five spaces designated for Goffstown residents. You know what I, I see when I go by there? I go by there eleven o'clock in the morning, I go by there at different times, I see two boats on the lake fishing and they're parked in the, where the trailers are, or sometimes because not everybody goes fishing and uses a trailer. Some people put their boat or their canoe or their fishing kayak in the back of their pickup truck on the roof racks or in the van. So.
I agree with you totally, Phil, that's why three spaces won't work, that's why five spaces won't work. I agree that all eighteen spaces are here for our town. Thank you for pointing that out. I, I do agree with you, I appreciate that information. Uh, the second piece, as far as an economic engine, if Goffstown is relying on eighteen parking spaces for, as an economic engine for our town, we need a better economic development plan. And the other reality of that is if those eighteen spaces, only half of them were from, half of them might be being used by our townspeople already, which means only maybe nine people are coming in from out of town. I don't think you honestly can say that, by the way, this is going to be some large economic engine, some quantitative piece. It is not about that. It is about a quality of life piece for the people of Goffstown to have access to something that is naturally there in their community, something that they drive by on a daily bit, you look at it, it's a gorgeous lake, the mountains are in the background, that's what it's about. And I, and I, and I think we should not get offside of that. And I do not think we should be lowering the amount of parking spaces of the eighteen there. And I think you said that quite clearly, I agree with you.
But if I can just respond there.
Sure.
So if we make it all eighteen spaces, all those spaces for only Goffstown residents, my understanding is fishing game's not going to stock it. And you know what happens? If the upper portion above the dam doesn't get stocked.
Why would that be the case if, if you're opening up, um, three spots?
If the trailers.
If the trailers can go in there.
Is for everyone?
For the fishing.
Is that the motion?
Yeah.
And the other piece about that is that you, you can go online and look and tell me when the last time Glen Lake was stocked and if they're being stocked this year, the answer is you won't find it, okay?
Only what I was gonna make, that if they don't stock the upper portion of Glen Lake, you're not going to have the fish down in the lower part below the dam.
Well, I'm saying just, it, it's not even on the plan this year for stocking it.
But he, he did say he stocks it every year.
Not everything's on the website.
All right, um, any further discussion? We have a, um, a motion on the table.
Can you read his motion again? Are you serious?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I thought you were joking with me.
No.
Your motion, do you want to reiterate it?
You want to read it or you want me to find it? Go back to it. That the Glen Lake beachfront be reserved for town residents and their accompanying. That the Glen Lake beachfront be reserved for town residents and their accompanied guests. That the eighteen parking spaces along the beach side of it be reserved for residents only, displaying the salvage permits sticker from the town. And that the remaining seven parking spaces which are across the street, which are the ones that were for trailer parking, should be utilized in a manner of four reserved for residents, and three for out of town, and marine patrol would be exempt, meaning they would be able to utilize any, any parking space available for them at any time.
All right, we have that motion, and we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. One, four, um, I'd like to make a motion that, um- I'm just gonna amend yours. Be a motion, um, to allow, uh, ten dedicated spots for Goffstown residents, eight for the general public in the same allocation, four for Goffstown residents, and three, uh, boat, um, spots for the, uh, for the outside, you know, the general public.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, did you say ten?
There's eighteen total, ten, ten for Goffstown, and, and eight for the general public. And then there's a total of seven boat, it'll be four for Goffstown residents only, and three for the general public, exclusive of marine patrol vehicles. Uh, bef- before, I'm just gonna, um, if it does, if it dies on a second, then we won't have any more discussion. Is there a second on that one?
I'll second.
All right.
Uh, I believe Steve's first point was that the beachfront itself was residents only, then you went into the two parking situations, correct?
Correct.
And did your motion address the beachfront itself?
The beachfront, there's eighteen spaces.
No, no, not the parking, the, the, the sand.
The sand?
Yeah, the beachfront.
What he's, what he's talking about is that I, my, my original motion is that the, the beach would be a town beach. By you opening up the other spaces, it no longer becomes a town beach, it just becomes public use.
Right.
And I think that's what the community was looking for, was for this to be a town beach.
And so I was asking if yours included that facet of the beach, the land at the beachfront itself, which is also-
It would be open. It would be open.
Also, that's a more of a sticky wicket of enforcement.
It would be open to the, to the general public, it just guarantees, uh, parking spaces for residents. Any further discussion? Okay, not hearing any, all-
Is that a question?
Yep.
How do we differentiate?
Because you just put up a sign.
Oh, how do we differentiate between resident and non-resident?
Um, because, oh, they, they would have their parking sticker.
Talk about transfer station?
Yeah, transfer station sticker. And/or another, if you wanna leave your driver's license on, that has your address on your, on your dashboard, that's fine, but registration, your car registration, leave it on the dash.
Yes. And what problems does this solve?
Thank you.
What, what it, what it solves is, is the fact that if there are access issues, from what I've heard, there are access issues for Goffstown residents who are shut out from using their own facility, because out-of-towners are, are monopolizing all of the spaces. And if that is the case, it gives them at least some degree of co- of comfort, knowing that half of the spots down there are dedicated for residents only, and the other half is open to the general public, it does not endanger anything with fishing game or restocking, it's still open to the public, but it guarantees Goffstown residents the ability to use that facility, um, and that it will not be monopolized, you know, by folks from out of town.
Being, I, I was like, and this isn't a part of it, was just to bring it out for, for the vote, I think, once again, once you break it into those numbers, it defeats the purpose. I think the numbers become too, too small, and the model is too small. I appreciate the effort, but sometimes when we compromise to, to accommodate all, we don't really receive much on either side. Those people coming in from out of town is very limited, and those from in-town are limited. In fact, even when you take all eighteen spaces and leave it for the town, you're limited on a population of eighteen thousand, I don't, so, um, anyway.
That's fine, we'll move on. All those, uh, in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those against, say nay.
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 Nay, that's, uh, one, four motion fails, any of the motions? Yes, Nick?
I wanna put it in the form of a motion, but I, I would like to see some information. One, uh, estimated cost for, um, a seasonal person. Just a generic, um, part-time seasonal person, or full-time seasonal person, that we could multiply if we wanted two seasonal persons, or three seasonal people, um, just the cost of a seasonal person, um, that we could look at to, to, um, patrol, or pick up trash, or remind people not to have alcohol, not to do it, but just to see what that cost would be.
No enforcement authority, though?
No enforcement authority.
Okay, 'cause the price would be different if you got someone.
Does, does, um, anything else?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why I'm saying that is because-
I just wanted to clarify each one of those.
When it's, we're gonna, we're, I do want it in the form of a motion, but it takes up time to do these things, and if you're alone here, which you may be, I don't know.
All right, let me list them off, and then I'll-
List them off, yep.
In, in the form of a motion. The projected, um, revenue from a parking system, the cost of a system, and I, I think we can probably get that, um, from Mr. Karen, the cost of a kiosk, and what we could potentially take in, to see if those revenues could cover the cost of a seasonal person. Um, and then I would like to immediately direct the police department to start intensive enforcement of the beach area, and the parking, as far, as far as illegal parking, people parking where they're not supposed to be parking, and not trying to find them, to ask them to move their vehicle, but immediately giving them a parking ticket. And then also directing Public Works to, or Parks and Rec, whoever's jurisdiction it is, to increase the number of trash receptacles at the beach, and then look at the actual cost of lighting at the beach to address the after-hours, uh, people who accumulate there.
I, I support all of those activities.
Can I make a suggestion on that? When I talk to the chief, the apparent, uh, his, from what I got from the chief was that, oh, after-hours is not really an issue.
That's what he said to me today, too.
All right, if I may?
Yeah.
That's not what I've heard from residents, and, uh, I mean, based on the, the lack of enforcement there, they may not be there when those things become an issue. I mean, it's difficult in the dark to know if there's people there, if you're driving by and you don't see them.
Well, I, I, and I just have to say, I guess, I, I, I have the concern, uh, and, and that we're not having the discussion with people who do the enforcement. Okay? And I think that the people who do the enforcement should be here, and we should be having that discussion.
You can override me as the chair, and I am, I will take no insult to this. I wanna give us another five more minutes. Do you wanna go longer than that? We've spent a lot of time on this, we've talked about what our goals are, et cetera. This is something that a resident threw on our lap, we have spent tens, twenty, thirty hours on this, probably if not more, of time. We seem to be getting nowhere. We're goin', we're asking for a lot of information, it wasn't on our priority list, it wasn't on a goal, wasn't anything. We can continue to do that, I don't wanna go there, but this board, you decide what we do.
I guess-
Um, and I'm, I'm all for it, Nick, everything that you said, if the board wants to go there, we will get all that information.
I guess I'm just at one, one spot. I'm at access, and if we're saying we're not gonna give our town preferred access to it, the enforcement piece can be done at a later time, it can be given to the chief, we can, I mean, the laws are already there, they can just go and enforce it. But if we're not giving any priority access to the people of our town, with what they paying taxes, we've missed the boat big time.
Yes, Nick?
I, 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 I agree with you, but I've heard more than access, and I don't wanna be here tonight and say it's a town beach only, and then six months from now, or next year, be here because there's still an issue with trash, or there's still, I, I wanna take all of the issues we've heard and try to come up with a solution that addresses all of them, so that we can solve the problem that we have at Glen Lake, and not just look at one thing and try to address it, because I think Goffstown residents are the best residents in the world, but to say that they don't do any of those other things that people have complained about, I think is short-sighted.
Can I ask another, uh, another suggestion here? We, Mr. Gar- Mr. Karen stated that he would serve on a committee, I think Mr. Adams would serve on a committee. Maybe, again, we step away from this thing, again, that's just a suggestion, and not micromanage it, let the people who have, who, we have a resident, we have somebody who's involved, who built it, and got the grant for it, we've got a police chief, we've got a DPW representative, and let them study it for a month or, month or so, and come back to us, and give us their recommendations, and it's either yay or nay, and not, not try to micromanage this thing, 'cause we all have our, our opinions as, as to how we're doing it, and to me, this is just my opinion, we, our greatest threat right now is our, is our taxes, and our tax rate, and being efficient, and, and that's our greatest, that's our, and we have four contracts coming up, these are big, high-level issues, and I'm not saying that this one is not important, it is, and it certainly is to the, to the residents who live around that area, and I don't wanna diminish that, but I have confidence in Mr. Karen, and Mr. Adams, and the police chief, and the DPW, and maybe one person here to formulate the plan, and let's, let's, let's just approve their recommendation. There's just a lot of other things going on. Yes.
I agree. But I think in the short term, we could also request stepped-up enforcement at the beach area, enforcing the existing parking ordinances and beachfront ordinances, get some more trash receptacles, and see if those make any difference.
The only thing that I, that you said that I don't think we can do, is I don't think we can tell the police chief what he does in terms of a warning, or what he does in terms of a ticket, that is his officer's judgment and call as a board. I could be wrong here, but I don't think that we can tell a police chief that you can't give a warning, or you, you have to give an immediate ticket. You can say that you want increased enforcement, I don't think we can go that far.
I, I, I'm just going back to past minutes where the suggestion was made about parking stickers, and the reason it was not passed was because the police chief at the time said, "My officers try to find the person with the car before we ticket it, and I don't have the resources to do that." So that never went anywhere. Well, if that's the problem, then you just give the ticket.
No, we do give out tickets, we've given out quite a few tickets. We do give out tickets.
And that's all my suggestion, my suggestion was that if someone's parked illegally, they get a ticket.
It'd be the same thing, if you were parked illegally in Manchester, they're not looking for you at, at the, at the subway store, hey, by the way, this is your car.
Exactly, that's all I was, I wasn't saying you give somebody a warning versus a ticket. Parking ticket is a parking ticket, if you're illegally parked, you get a ticket.
I think, I think part of that may have been in the very beginning, or something, so when people weren't aware of, of, of it, that's what that may have been.
This is the back of when it first started, yes, Steve?
And I just wanna make, you made a comment, we do have other things to, to go to, and I agree with that. And the thing I find amazing here is that I find this simple, I find this eighteen spaces, eighteen thousand people, very simple, and though we cannot, and though as a board, we cannot come to an agreement on that, yet we'll go forward thinking, you know, with, with all these other things in place, but yet something as simple as this is getting tabled, pushed aside, it's another year, it, it, it doesn't make sense, we should've been able to come to a concession, I mean, I mean, a consensus that, do we want this beach to ha- do we want our community to have privileged access to the lake? Yes or no? And the answer I'm getting from the board here is no, which, um, so I guess I will be, ex- I'll accept myself as in the minority, that the board says we want to keep it as a public beach, and we will not give preference to our community. Why don't we just move on?
You're oversimplifying.
It is that simple.
No, but that, that's your opinion, and that has, but that's, that's your opinion. I, I'm hearing that there are others on the board want to explore some other options, such as stepped-up enforcement, um, the entertainment, uh, you know, a kiosk, uh, more waste receptacles, et cetera.
It doesn't address access.
Patrols on the beach.
My, my point is, is that I think we have to respect each other's opinions, you are in the minority on this, I'm in agreement, I don't wanna spend a lot of time, but the rest of this board does, and from what I'm hearing, I think the best avenue to go here is because it's four or five things, it involves DPW at trash, it involves the police department, if there are some other factors, it involves the residents, it involves the gentleman who secured the money to develop it in the first place, let these folks get together, let them, if that means that we wanna study it in the summertime, then people can study it in the summertime, and then come back and give us what you wanna do, and, and, and I think we should not micromanage this one, whatever recommendations that they come back, we'll have all the stakeholders involved, and let them hash out and come to congre- agreement and consensus, and our job should be, you know, to pretty much approve their recommendation.
That's where things go to die, and that's where next year will be coming around, and we'll still be looking at it.
Well, but that's part of the government process, unfortunately.
I'm just saying that's what's happening here, and if that's where we're going, that's fine, but that's where it's going. That's what this is all about, it will die there.
But that's because you believe that it should be restricted to Goffstown residents only.
Can you tell me how many decades we've been looking at this problem, and you still can't make a decision?
It's been ten years, almost.
Okay, so ten years, and hey, let's go another year and think about it and talk about it. That's the reality of the board. I'm, I'm, I, I apologize, I'm done today with that.
I'd like to put my suggestions in form of a motion. Somebody, Alex Trebek, you put it in form of a question. Would you like me to repeat? I think we've got it. Catherine, we, we have that, right? We have, we have stepped-up enforcement.
Estimated cost for seasonal person.
Right, uh, cost of a kiosk.
Projected revenue from parking system, kiosks. Uh, direct police intensive enforcement of parking, and other issues, other ordinance, probably of all the, whole ordinance.
We passed ordinances for that beachfront.
Well, they are enforced, so I don't think you need to put that in your motion.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want the information, and I don't have a problem seconding your motion if you keep it to the information as far as the seasonal and the projected revenues, those, I have no problem with that.
You have an illegal, you have an endorse, you have an ordinance for illegal parking and all other stuff, it's already in there.
And I, and I think if we go a month, and we intensify that enforcement, if there is a-
I think that's the chief's plan.
That's the chief's plan, this is what I, I-
Well, I'm, I just wanna put it in the form of a motion, so it's, it's there.
I would prefer, I'll gladly second the motion, if you leave it to the first two.
Well, there's more. Increased number of trash receptacles and cost of lighting.
We leave it to the first two and the last-
Two.
Remove the third, the middle item, and I'll second you.
This is like Middle East peace, um, okay.
I'd support you. That's fine, I'll take that.
Do you have your motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Selectman Navanza.
First two and the last two.
He agreed. I got the nod, right?
All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those against, say nay. Nay. And what are you?
I'm a nay.
You're a nay. A motion passes three, two. Any timeframe on this? Obviously enforcement would be-
Tomorrow.
No, seriously, I mean, I don't want it to, or week after, I, I just don't want this to sit for a month, the summer will be over before, yeah, we get any information.
All right. And the reason for my nay, um, is I know we have the, the, the right, or every once in a while to say nay, was I just think that it's, it's a very, uh, mine was an access issue, and, um, I just think it's very time-consuming to do some of these things, and-
I would like to second, if the issue was an access, it, it was an access issue, and that's what we passed on.
Okay, so let's keep going. Um, new business, right? Plan for installation of town line signs on public road, and I'll turn that over to Selectman Pierce.
Thank you. Yes, this is a new subject that I've not heard discussed by this board before, um, there's thirty-one public roads leading into our town. I've, I've noticed that, uh, the standard, uh, New Hampshire, white on green, long, narrow, standard town line sign indicating Gulfstown are only installed at five of the thirty-one crossing points. Uh, two are on the Manchester line at Pinnard Street and Gulfstown Back Road, one's on Bedford Line at the, uh, Route one fourteen Limited Access Highway, and two are on, on New Boston Line, on the, uh, Route thirteen and Route one fourteen. And I provided you a list of all thirty-one crossing sites, and the status of whether there's a post, whether there's a, a sign for our town, or a sign for the other town. I consider that I consider that the lack of our name on town line sign, signs are a poor image for this town and goes back to economic development. We've set up these committees to promote ourselves, even the business exposition coming up next weekend, recreational opportunities, and even next year anniversary of this town. And I would think one of the first steps in promoting our town would be proud enough of ourselves to say, "You're crossing the town line and you're now entering Gulfstown." I've talked to two real estate agents who, one from Bedford, one from Gulfstown, and they admit they have difficulty explaining to potential homeowners where they are when visiting homes for sale, and this is particularly true in Pernardville area where streets run in a diagonal to the basically north, south, east, west orientation of our boundaries. And conclusion of this discussion is I would like the board to have Director of DPW present us a plan, taking my sheet as his starting point, for a cost of installing all the signage at the missing locations. And if that plan was approved, could be over twelve months, two fiscal years, to coordinate that plan with the adjoining communities with the hopes that they would contribute their sign for the post and...
Oh, they'd be on the opposite side.
Yes. And then, because there's seventeen locations that are completely lacking posts at all.
Yeah.
And then, of course, if they fail to produce a sign, we should still put ours up anyways. That's my new, there's, and I've gone to the extent of printing out the GIS partial shapes from Manchester and Gulfstown, and I've stood on those sidewalks at all the crossings in Pernardville to determine, should we put a sign on this side of the sidewalk or the other side of the street, which one would be best for crossing points? And there are good solutions at every, every street in Pernardville. When you are crossing in the Dunbarton and some of the more outlying places, it's sometimes clear that you're going into another town, but some of those, I've had to stop and actually look at very detailed maps in order to know where I was at the town line. I'd just like to hear that discussion from the rest of the board and whether we'd like to charge the Director of DPW to take on this project and present us a cost.
Phil.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Where'd you say there was one in Pernardville coming in?
The Pernard Street, going towards Kelly Street.
Okay, so in other words, you didn't see, you didn't see the side of King Lanes that's all done up, welcome to Pernardville, community of Gulfstown?
You didn't get that one. Now, are these going to be for residents or non-residents, these ones? Because if they're not for...
The other question I have, coming in, coming in from Hooksett.
The standard green sign.
Coming in from Hooksett, there is a sign that says, on Hooksett Road, that says, "Welcome to Gulfstown."
Would you like to see this?
Sure.
I know what they look like.
When you're coming from Bow, from Dunbaron on Twist Hill Road, it was the sign that says Gulfstown.
I was there last week. Twist Hill Road, no Gulfstown sign. I was there last week.
But there's one that says Dunbaron.
Yes.
The Gulfstown side is probably in a dorm up at St. Ace.
The answer is yes. The yes sign is there. The other town has the sign up.
Either a St. Paul school.
All right.
We ought to be proud enough to put our name on the proper sign of that post.
One question, this is both serious. Have you had a, have you had discussion with DPW, with your department head?
No. I would like to encourage this board to...
I think he's asking permission to do that and to explore the options.
I guess the reason I'm asking is because I thought that we've had the discussion in the past, a while back, that you would have that, and then I would anticipate that you would have that discussion with the department head before having us make a motion.
I think what David is doing is rather than having the department head not, you know, explore and do an investigation in terms of the cost, et cetera, that if this board was not amenable to this, then he'd be wasting their time.
No, no. What I'm getting at is, there might be reasons, they might be an order. I'm just saying, sometimes that discussion, the simple question.
Then he could put that information into a presentation for us. I have brought forward to the board a lack of signage indicating our town and a simple case of asking the director to put forth a plan as to, if he's already involved in rectifying it, great, let him tell us. If not, have a cost put on that, and we could go with his recommendation, whether it is sufficient money for this year or next year.
And any problems with having, let David have this conversation?
I have no problem with it. I just...
Wait a minute, we're going to go forward with this?
No, he's going to have conversations with...
We're going to come back and we're going to have a proposal.
Now, I mean, again, you weren't on the board a year or two ago, but we, yeah, we talked about, well, I know I brought up this issue of a sign, you know, a nice welcome to, you know, whether it be at like three or four gateways into our community, which...
I was in the audience at that time.
Okay, I'm saying there's a lot of communities that do that for, it's a charm factor, wow, here we go, we're going to this quaint town, et cetera, and I did mention that, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't be paying for it, but would there be any service organizations, whether it be Lions or Optimist Club or...
The Lions do, the Rotary does.
Right. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of communities where, like, say Dublin, or Peterborough, or others, they, you go through their community and they have a nice wood sign and it's, you know, it's welcome, and they put a little logo, and it kind of goes in that vein, so you know you're coming into a community.
Just watching.
Okay. Like, we had one planned for you, and it was like, welcome to Lynchville-Danus Park, you know, but...
I'm glad to know we can get the town line sign through. That's good.
All right.
Don't forget, there's a scenic highway signs that have been done.
All right, we're good? Next. Next is...
Hold on, lost my spot. Okay, any old business? You have old business.
Yeah, just a quick, I'd asked a couple of weeks ago, the board some time ago had authorized a gravel parking area at the library, and then a couple of weeks ago, I'd asked for the update, the status of that, and we were going to get information on it. We had talked about...
I wasn't here. I mean, I was here for the...
For the...
I asked Carl, and he said he didn't remember any clear direction from the board about having gravel. Diane has put it in CIP for the parking lot.
I thought the board, we were pretty clear.
Yeah.
But hers would be for a full-fledged professional.
Right.
Right.
This was making it usable.
For the interim, just gravel.
Right.
Clearing an area, putting some gravel down and...
I...
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, then.
Does the library want it?
It wasn't clear.
They do, they want, they want to use it. They want to use something. When I was, I don't know if this past trustees meeting, but the one before that, the trustees gave me a plan of the parking lot as proposed, which is going to go into CIP, but that could be two, three, four, five years out, and what they want to do is just have it gravel so they can at least park there, knowing that in the wintertime, probably not going to be able to park there because of lighting or some other issues, but for six, seven...
Drainage issues, too.
Right, but with knowing our, we have the equipment to address some of those things. We have these materials already. It wouldn't be, I don't think it would be that big of an, you know, we spent, as a community, we spent over $200,000 on that piece of land, and just for it to sit there and not being used, it just doesn't make any sense, so we're, I would be in favor of that myself, and I apologize for not bringing it. I thought we did address that, that they would at least jury-rig something so that it could be used as a parking lot.
And not the whole parcel.
No, I think it's, they're looking for like eight to ten spots, I thought. So you want to make a motion? Okay. I'll second it.
What is the motion?
To just have DPW work with the library and designate a small area...
Okay, to increase the parking.
To increase the parking, gravel it.
So they'll be coming in the same cutout, going through...
Temporary.
They'll be coming in and out of the same cutout, just going into a larger extended...
On a temporary basis.
Temporary basis. Yep. I'll second.
Karen, go ahead, see if you second it.
I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any other old business? Let's go to committee reports. We're not going to take a break, by the way, we're almost done. Economic Development Council.
I think you hit on the highlights, Scott. May fifteenth is the Business Expo, that's at the Gulfstown High School. One of the other things that came up for a lot of conversation was regarding support for businesses in Pernardville. Mr. Highco brought that up regarding that the Pernardville businessmen in the area don't feel part of the Economic Development Committee, I mean, Council, and they don't feel that they get a lot of support also from the Main Street, and they're trying to talk about ways that they can start becoming more gel and coming together on that, and they're going to look at that for future. Vote was also taken that we continue our, excuse me, we continue being part of the Manchester Area Chamber of Comppers, and in the last piece that came up, which of course, I mean, it's been kicked around quite a few times, was they talked a lot about public transportation to and from the village, which of course, I mean, there's a lot of difficulties facing that, but that was the other last topic that we spoke on.
All right. Next is HDC. Historic District Commission, for those out there.
HDC did meet last Wednesday. One of the topics was 250th anniversary of Mirabilia, and the commission is planning a paperweight for the 250th celebration with the town seal on it. They also discussed a historic marker that's going to be erected over Abington Square where the cake that was demolished. Part of the process of the acceptance of the demolition of that property was a sign, a marker, historic marker for that property. So the design and some changes were made for that. They will also be at the Business Expo, they'll have a booth there. Also had some discussion on CLG grants, the upcoming ones, checking on status of the application process, which has not been announced yet, and also still working on some issues with the L-Chip grant, trying to get some things for final approval from the division.
All right. Next up is ZBA. Can I can read those? Hold on one second. Make sense file. Zoning Board of Adjustment held a public meeting on five-three, I'm sorry, five-four. Len Stewart was sworn in as an alternate. The board voted four-zero-one to approve the minutes. Public hearings, there were three. MAP 21, Lot 115, Tim Block on behalf of property owners, Jennifer Levy and Marie LaRoche seeking a variance to construct a five-by-15 addition that would not conform to some setbacks. And they voted, the ZBA voted five-zero to find the application, no regional impact, and then voted five-zero to approve the variances, provided a silt fences in place to protect the surface water during construction. MAP nine, Lot 25-1, Falcon Heights Properties LLC seeking a special exception to allow the construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit that will measure 650 square feet in conformance with Section 5.2 of the zoning ordinance. Zoning Board voted five-zero to find the application, had no regional impact, and then voted five-zero to approve the special exception, provided a state-approved septic plan is submitted with the building permit and the house is constructed as presented. Next is MAP 25, Lot 27. Scott Buckland seeking a variance to allow him to operate his boat business from his residence at 115 Danus Park Road. In a residential two district, the board conducted the public hearing on the matter and voted to continue the hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting to allow board members and the public to an opportunity to review the new material submitted. They voted five-zero to find the application, no regional impact, and voted five-zero to continue it till June first. And that is that. All right. Our website, I read somewhere that May nineteenth, we're going live. Is that accurate?
Well, we'll probably have a draft to see, but it may be a week after that because before we started ticking, when he received his deposit, and he was expecting the deposit before his vacation, but it was delayed, so. He has a week vacation, so it's more like five weeks.
I wrote myself a note, and that was, I think it's imperative for us to put all these road closure notices on the web and take everything, make it flash, I don't care what we do, but we've got to let people know, there's a lot of construction going on, and I think we need to do that. I just may, I'll take direction from the board, but does the board concur? Should that be put on the website ASAP or not? That's your...
I think they're up to date right now. I checked with Ryan about the last one.
So we also do have the flashing signs that are given.
The reader board. No, I know that, but the website, you know, still should, that's just my opinion.
It's just that not everybody has access to the website.
Right.
Plus, we're also dealing with people who drive through town.
I got to Brian about it.
Yeah, they're all up there.
They're all now? Where are they under?
Public notices and announcements.
I know that, but no one...
Maybe should road closures or something?
I think, I guess what I'm trying to say is, when you, when you look at that website, it's just, it's all stagnant, I mean, no one...
Well, the newest thing is listed in red right next to public notices.
I know, but if you were selling an item, if you were selling something, would you put, you know, sales in the corner, or would you put, hey, I'm selling something, and it's the first thing you see?
Yeah, but people get accustomed to the groupings you have things in, but it may be a subgroup of road closures under the public notices.
And maybe the word new should only be active for two months.
All right. Okay, we'll go into a non-public.[1774.12]